All right, thank you. Do have a quorum, and we're at item five on the agenda. This is the portion of each council member, each council meeting that the council sets aside to your comments from our residents. If you'd like to address the council tonight, we ask that you go to the podium, clearly state your name and address, please keep your comments brief, and know that the council won't take action on anything that you have to say tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda? I'll just, I see, I see three, so y'all just get in line and...
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Hi.
Hi, Lisa. Hi, I just wanted to take a brief moment to introduce myself. My name is Lisa Parks. I am running for Arkansas State Senate District 31, which is the new district that covers most of Springdale. So I just, like I said, I wanted to introduce myself, and I appreciate y'all giving us the opportunity to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here, Lisa. Somebody's gotta go now. It's not that bad.
Yes, my name's Ron Minant, and I'm, I'm working with the master naturalist over at Lake Springdale on the trailhead, the rain garden, and as I'm sure some of you all have seen, the rain garden is now different than it was a week ago. And, and the parking lot is that same way. And, and I mentioned this back in 2017 when the parking lot was removed and torn up real badly. And I, I want to make a suggestion that you all at least want to think about it. Maybe you all already made a decision. I think you all had a meeting today with Parks and Rec and Public Works and the mayor. But I talked to Rick over at Water Department. That big pad that sits west of the, the bridge of Silent Grove didn't get any damage at all. Didn't, the water didn't even come near it. And it did not, my point is, if you go back and repave that, you've got five years probably before this happens again. And as a citizen of Springdale, you know, paying for a parking lot that we know is going to get stripped off again, we armored it on the west, on the east side, but it still peeled it up. You've got a parking lot, you, you wouldn't have to pay. You wouldn't have, you'd just stripe it. And the Water Department said, "We have no use for that right now." I mean, they have no intention of using it anytime soon. That would be a perfect spot to put a parking lot, and it could be as soon as, you know, rather than trying to deal with that. Second thing is-
You're talking, just so I'm clear, you're talking about the asphalt pad where they used to dry slug on the west side of Silent Grove.
Yeah, and that's the, it's, it's, if you drive down there, you'll see it on the west side. It, it didn't get any, it got water about, on the, on right at the bridge. It didn't come anywhere near that. And, and, you know, that would be my recommendation is to at least evaluate that rather than going and spending another however much you all spent the last time and go that direction. At the same time, there is no bathrooms, and I, I've talked to the mayor about this, even a composting toilet or anything like that up at Lake Springdale. I talked to Rick, and he said, "Yeah, there's a sewer line near it, and, and it's right below that subdivision. A waste, a bathroom, because there's no bathroom between downtown Springdale and Lowell." And people, when I've been out there at the rain garden working, guys in particular, the ladies are a little bit more selective of where they go to the bathroom. But I've had guys come up to me and say, "Where's the nearest bathroom?" I'll say Hunt Park, and they'll go, "Yeah, it's too far." They'll go over in the woods below JB Hunt Elementary, or into the, where the, the wildlife viewing area is, and do their business. You know, it's, I understand that, but you could put a bathroom at that point, point up above that pad. People riding when we have the square-to-square race, that would be great to have a bathroom so people aren't going, "Ah, yeah, I gotta make it to Lowell." So that's just my recommendation. At least evaluate those pads as a, as an alternative. And while you're there, you know, bathrooms would be a really great facility, and the, and Rick has said, "Yeah, it wouldn't, you'd have to have a pump to, to pump the, the waste from that station." But that would be my recommendation is just at least think about it rather than spending whatever it would take to do that again and again, and, you know, every five years. Because it happened in 2017, and it happened again this year with rain, so.
Okay. Good, good suggestions, Ron. Let me, let me, since you brought it up, I'll give you a little update-
Yes, please.
-on the two suggestions you made. On the, on the trailhead parking lot that was torn up, right now, Public Works is, is getting estimates on that, because we've got, that's in Benton County, that particular trailhead. And Washington County has already declared a disaster on the, on the Washington County side. Benton County is thinking about it, but they're trying to get some estimates to see if they thought, if they, if they think they'll meet any kind of threshold, minimum threshold for FEMA. And so they're gonna, we're, we're getting them estimates now. I, James and I have not talked about this, but I, I hadn't thought about the pad on the other side, or how that would all work, or how we'd access it, but it, it's worth looking at. But on the, on the east side where the, where the trailhead is now, I'm wondering if, if James, if we might look at, depending on if we're gonna have any money come to the table, or if this is all gonna be on us. I, I, I think the possibility of some concrete there rather than asphalt might be a good option. I don't know now, right now, how much, I know there used to be a big difference in price. I'm not sure that's the case now as much. So that might be an option, Ron, that would keep that from getting torn up when it does flood. But anyway, we, we can look at the other, the other side, too. On the restrooms, we've, we've been looking for a long time at a, at a location for restrooms out there. Now, they wouldn't be down at the trailhead. What we're looking at would be up on top of the hill, near where the old milk barn is behind Rabbit Foot Lodge. It would still be, you know, with a trail to it, it still wouldn't be too bad. Be a lot better than where it is now, you know? And, but, but that, that's really handy to sewer up there. Wouldn't have to pump anything, and, because it'd be right across from where those, where those pipes cross over the road. So anyway, we are, we are looking at those, but we'll look at different options. But we need a, we need a restroom probably closer to, we thought if we could split the difference between Rabbit Foot Lodge and the trailhead, then we might be able to serve both those locations with a, with a restroom. So something we're thinking about. But we'll, we'll take your comments under advisement, and appreciate you bringing them forward.
And the one thing about the trailhead, there's a trail that runs straight from the parking lot, goes under the bridge, so there, there really would be straight to parking lot-
True.
-and, and that, there would be no problem. People would be able to park over there, and, and you don't replace the asphalt in, even if somebody else is paying for it.
Gotcha.
That's it.
Well, yeah, well, yeah, we're all paying for it anyway. No matter who, no matter where we're getting the money-
Yes, I understand.
-we're all paying for it. So I appreciate it. Thank you. Larry?
Yes, I'm Larry Self. I live on Maple Drive here in Springdale. Yesterday, as I was coming home, the, the city had gone over on Maple Avenue where you used to have those little speed bumps for the bicycle lane. Of course, you removed those and made the street perfect without them there. Nobody rides bicycles down Maple Avenue.
Well, I do.
But the number of cars that goes down Maple Avenue versus the number of bikes is well over, outweighs what's there. They replaced those with what I call concrete that you see on parking lots for you to pull up to, which are twice as high as those other little speed bumps. And when I hit it yesterday, it immediately blew my tire, and I'm not sure what else it, it has done to my car. And shortly after me, another car hit them, blew his tire. I went down to take pictures of it, and when I went down to take pictures of it, I had to motion one of your ambulances coming in with a patient, because she was headed right straight for them. The way they're sitting there, they're a danger, and they're a hazard, and they're causing damage to the city people's cars that need to go to the hospital or go up and down that street. I found a cone, and I carried it and put it in front of one of them. When I come home from work tonight, I noticed the city had gone back out and put cones at each end. I talked to a gentleman by the name of Mr. Smith last night-
Yeah, James was here.
...that said he would, he would get some kind of color. You can't see them. And when you come off of 71, when you make that turn, it points you right straight towards them, and then you have to veer a little bit to the left. And if you don't veer, you hit them head-on, and it's saying, it's gonna tear a bunch of cars up.
Well, we're, I think, James, I think y'all are painting some reflective things on the, I mean, they're out, they're not in the lane. They're out of the driving lane.
But if you look at the lane, Mayor, whenever you turn off of 71, they're actually, that you're going straight towards them, you have to veer over to miss them to get in the lane of the way, the, the way that road is laid out there. And, and, you know, as I say, it's, I don't, I know it's already cost me $160 today, and I'm not sure what else on that.
Well, we, you know, the hospital did ask that some sort of barrier be replaced in front of the hospital, and that was the agreement when we redid Maple. And so those are gonna stay, but we'll, we'll try and mark the, mark the end the best we can.
They need to be flagged so that people-
But it, but if you stay, if drivers stay in their lane, they won't hit them. So, and, and I know that, but, but that's just a fact. So, so anyway, but we'll, we're, we're gonna try and make them more visible, and-
Do they have to be that high?
And, well, yeah, that's what those come, but, but if you don't, if you-
But-
You're defeating the purpose if you don't, if you don't, if, if your purpose is, is to protect those in that bike lane, whether they're walking or biking, then-
Well, you got a sidewalk for people to walk in.
Yeah, you do, you do. But I think the, I think those curbs were much less objectionable than the zebras that were there before.
Yeah, and they were, they were a mess as well.
Yeah, so we're, that's what we're going to, where, where they request those protected bike lanes. And I think they'll work well. I'm sorry you found out the hard way, you know, and that, that you were surprised by them, and we're gonna try and help that, and I, I think Ernest told you to come talk to me, and we'll-
I haven't, I, I sent him an email. I haven't, I haven't, if he sent me one back, I haven't had a chance to, to see it.
He responded, and we'll, we'll try and do something fair on that if we can.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Captain.
All right, thank you, Larry. Anyone else? All right, then we'll move on. To item six, public hearing, and I'm gonna turn this over to Ernest.
Thank you. Item number 12 on the agenda is an ordinance vacating a portion of utilities meant at 2310 Willow Bend Circle for John and Jerry Limbakis. And as you know, the statute requires that a public hearing be held before the ordinance can be considered. The clerk published notice of the public hearing as required by statute. So is there anyone here that wants to comment on that particular item? Not, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll take it up on, ordinance up on item number 12.
All right, thank you. Item seven, get a little feedback there. Item seven, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to accept them as presented.
Submove.
Second, we have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item eight, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, Council? Got a motion, a second for A and B. Roll call, please. Yes.
How?
Yes.
Yes.
Lawson?
Forrest?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry 70.
All right, thank you. Word, item nine, Planning Commission reporting recommendations by Patsy Christie. Patsy?
The first item on the agenda is an appeal of the Board of Zoning Adjustment Denial of various requests for property located at Raymond Lane.
I'll make a motion, we overturn the Board of Zoning Adjustments Denial.
Second. Is anything else, I'm sorry, does anything else need to be in that motion as far as-
No, the, the, if you recall, the state law prior to last year required that appeals from Board of Zoning Adjustment decisions could only be made to Circuit Court, and the General Assembly changed that, gave cities the option to allow them to come to the city council. You all took that option. This is actually the first one that has come for you, of course, Mr. Dodson, of course.
Push a nod, a little.
Long story short, long story short on this, he had an existing, Mr. Dodson can correct me if I'm wrong, but he had an existing, he could have built it back, it was in the setback. He could have built it back on the same footprint, but decided to make it a little longer. Actually, his words, he was building back better. And, and therefore had to request a setback variance. There was opposition in planning commission by an adjacent property owner who I don't see here tonight, but Mr. Dodson has exercised his right to appeal to the city council, and voting to overturn would allow the variance, let him continue building his-
So voting to overturn the variance would approve, would approve the variance?
It would overturn-
Overturning the planning commission's decision would approve the variance-
It would. It would allow him to get the permit.
In the same motion. Okay. All right, just one more. Any other, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? So, is it Coons? They're not here? Were there attorneys? I'm opening it up to y'all, and I'm opening it up to the room, and I don't see anyone here to speak yet in opposition. We'll give them another chance. Do you have anything else? Kevin, or the council have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. And anyone want to speak to this motion? Okay.
I'm Tim Snively. I represent the Dodson family on this, and really what they're asking for is a status quo. The original building was built back in the 1950, or 1970, so it's been there 50 years. That was before this property was even in the city limits, was out of the county at that time. A tree fell on it, you know, an act of God, and they have to rebuild. So the setbacks for this new building are the exact same setbacks as the original building. All he's done is brought it 20 foot further this way. I went out there and took pictures. I don't know if you all have been out there, but page 39 is a picture I took, and if you look at the building they've started to build, on the left side is the, the one setback, and on the back is the other setback. And those lines are the same that they've been for 50 years. So he not really asking for anything to change, he just wants it to be the same. He's building it a little longer out towards the front. That doesn't encroach the property lines at all. It'll be a nicer new building. The other one that was there certainly didn't look as nice as this. So we're just asking for him to be able to build a building on the same spot as the other one was.
Okay.
If anyone have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, we'll vote on the motion.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Carry 70.
Guys, can we find that feedback? Mike, that is? Go ahead, Patsy. We'll just talk through it, and they'll, they'll get it set.
The next item on the agenda is accepting a replat of lots 13 and 14 of Spring subdivision into a 13A. They are combining two lots into one. The title, the planning commission recommends approval of the replat. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the replat of lot 1, 2, and 3," and, wrong one.
Yeah.
Start with this one. An ordinance accepting the replat of lots 13 and 14, Spring Ridge subdivision into 13A, Spring Ridge subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
Second, did anybody, anybody speak against this?
No, they're just comply, combining two lots together. They want to put a pool in the, in the second lot, and so it wasn't-
We have motion, second. Is there anyone in the room who needs to speak to this? Are you there, Amelia?
Yes, I can barely hear you guys, but yes, I'm voting yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Word's closed, be adopted.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 70.
Emergency clauses are included on these because of pending actions on them. The next item is a requ, a replat of lots 1, 2, and 3 in the east 22 feet of lot 4, block 22 of Railroad Edition. Planning commission reviewed this replat, recommends approval. They're really taking three lots, turn them the other direction, and creating two lots. Title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the replat of lots 1, 2, 3 in the east 22 feet of lot 4, block 22 of Railroad Edition to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency."
Motion approved. Second, we have, we have a motion and a second. There we go, thank you. Motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Word's closed, be adopted. Second.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 80.
And the last item is an ordinance accepting the final plat of Phase 2 of the cottages at the Park subdivision. Planning commission reviewed this final plat, recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the final plat of Phase 2 of cottages at the Park subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance pass.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? All right, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Word's closed, be adopted.
Second.
Fugierus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance, emergency clause, carry 80.
All right, thank you. Item 10, Finance Committee Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Finance Committee, David, David has two items to present tonight. The first item is a, how we, our resolution expresses the willingness of this city of Springdale to utilize federal, sorry, federal funding for the following project, Dean's Trail Phase, I don't know if that's 3A, I guess?
It is.
And this resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
Mike Peters is here to answer any questions.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Okay, we got a motion, a second. Anyone have any questions or comments? I know we talked about it in committee. Anyone in the audience?
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yeah.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry 80.
Second item has to do with the acquisition of property for Dean's Trail, and the title of this resolution is, "A resolution authorizes the expenditure of funds to acquire a portion of land from Juniper Springdale LLC for the Dean's Trail Phase 3A project, project number ST 1802." I'd ask, I guess, Ernest, if you wouldn't mind talking about this, but this resolution was also forwarded to council with recommendation for approval, or whoever, was it you, Ernest, or?
Sure.
I think, I think Mike negotiated, but, but we brought it to Ernest, and he brought it to me, so.
This, Juniper Springdale LLC owns on both sides of Electric Avenue, and there was appraisal done, and there was a different per square foot value for the north side versus the south side, and they protested that they be paid the same. They didn't ask for an increase in compensation for one side of the road, but they just wanted both sides to be valued equally, which we've done similar, uh, on 40th Street. We had one that was like that. We wouldn't have to file imminent domain proceedings.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Carry 80.
All right, thank you. Item 11, Fire Committee Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We met, uh, as a fire committee, and they'll have one item that came up, and it was forwarded with recommendation for approval. I'll read the title of the resolution. It's, "A resolution to waive competitive bidding for purchase of SCBA compressors and equipment for the fire department." And Chief Holt's here, if anybody has any question for him.
Make a motion to adopt.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions for the chief? This is part of a, we're basically paying the remainder, uh, the majority of this is being paid by the Washington County with ARPA funds-
Yep.
-a grant from Washington County, and they're paying how much?
They're paying $683,974.
Okay, so, good deal for us. Okay? All right, Denise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson? Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Carry's eight zero.
All right, thank you. And item twelve, actually twelve, thirteen, and fourteen will be our city attorney. So Ernest, item twelve?
Thank you. The item twelve is an ordinance releasing, vacating, and abandoning a portion of utilities located on property in Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, declaring emergency for other purposes. This is the property at twenty-three ten Willow Bend Circle, uh, vacating a portion of utilities so they can fit in this one.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Ernest, is this the same one we talked about months ago, or is this a different one?
This is a different one.
This is a different one, okay?
I think one you're thinking of is a different one.
Okay.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Fairly common request.
Yeah, well, it was in Willow Bend, though.
We did have one in Willow Bend.
Yeah, we had one in Willow Bend, yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. All right, no other questions or comments, then Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson? Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Both the ordinance clauses be adopted. Second.
Watson? Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance's emergency clauses, carry eight zero. The next item is a resolution setting a hearing date on petition to vacate a portion of Putman Street. If you look on page, uh, sixty-eight on your agenda, if you remember when we widened West Huntsville Street, the access to, to the three north-south streets, Harris, Putman, and Purcell, that access to Huntsville was removed, so the traffic could be converted to shiloh. And, uh, the owners of the parcels on either side of this are, uh, pursuing a development on this property, wish to vacate the portion of the street that's kind of highlighted in the pink area, and their access would be off, uh, Putman Street. We're not vacating the, the entire Putman for price, just the part on the pink.
Move the resolution pass.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? So up to the sidewalk?
It would be to the south roundway line.
So Ernest, we ended up with quite a few properties that the city ended up with after all that, uh, acquisition. Do we still have any of those? Do you remember?
We got rid of all those on Huntsville Street.
That's what I'm asking.
Believe we, we, we did, and we did accept for the one at, near the Jones Center. Didn't. Okay.
On what? So none of, around this Putman area, though?
They're all uneconomic remnants, is what we got.
Yeah, we, I, I think, Mike, I think we, then we do, we kind of had an auction or something.
Well, we had a bidding process. We had some folks came in and, uh, they picked them up because almost all of them were adjacent property.
Yeah, it's been several years ago.
Really didn't have any benefit to the city.
Right.
But it did benefit them to have a little larger lawn.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Williams?
Because.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry's seven zero. The, uh, the last item, uh, I'll read the title and I'll explain. It's one of the more unusual, uh, items that I've seen in a while. It's a resolution authorizing the conveyance of land owned by the city of Springdale to ENS Anderson Properties LLC in exchange for property owned by ENS Anderson Properties LLC. In your packet on, uh, page seventy-three, you'll see a copy of a lot split document that was filed in two thousand and one. And recently it was discovered, uh, through a survey, I believe, that the area that shaded in green on the lot split, uh, was actually owned by, was part of the legal description for lot sixteen A, shouldn't have been. And the area shaded in the pink, uh, was included in lot fifteen A and shouldn't have been. So it would basically be swapping what the city owns, which is the little green triangle or the pink triangle, which makes it consistent with, with the drainage channel, which is lot sixteen A. Okay.
Which just clears up a survey and...
It does. Move the, uh, resolution be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone in the room?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugirous? How?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Flores?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry's eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item fifteen, any comments from the City Council?
I got a quick question, Mayor.